All right, I think my phone's on silent. Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council meeting for Tuesday, April 2nd, 2019. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Guskolviak.
Here.
Councilmember Kicker.
Here.
Councilmember Demmer.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Wells.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here. Thank you. First item on our agenda then is to adopt this evening's agenda.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer.
I move to adopt the agenda with one added presentation to the Proclamations and Presentation section.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Geisler, to adopt the agenda with the one added item. Apparently there's something else going on tonight. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the agenda is adopted. And we are up to proclamations and presentations. And I'm thinking, who can have? Chief Piper lead us on? That's why you're sitting over there instead of in your...
Yeah.
Welcome.
Welcome. Mayor, councilmembers, it's very exciting for me to be up here and thank you for allowing me a couple of minutes and I'll be brief. As you know, we were here late last year and did a meet the rescuer for one of the cardiac arrest survivors here in Coon Rapids. You remember that well. And fortunately, that's becoming very commonplace in Coon Rapids, that these dramatic saves where we can take somebody from a cardiac arrest situation and bring them back to where they can live a normal life with their family and others. And I'm very proud of the effort that gets put forth. As you know, Brian Platts from our police department has worked hard on the HeartSafe community thing where we need to get early defibrillation, early CPR, make that 911 calls as soon as possible. But once that happens, it really becomes the team effort that you've heard me talk about. I mean, it does not happen by accident. Once that 911 call gets made, it has to go to our dispatch center up in Anoka County and the people that work up there then coordinate things and get police and fire an ambulance to the scene. So again, at the scene, you got the three agencies have to do their job. And when they're done at the scene, the victim has to go up to Mercy Hospital where they receive excellent care to continue the process of bringing him back. And with that said, I'm just proud that we can do what we do and this is becoming so commonplace because it sure wasn't just a few short years ago. And with that, you're gonna hear at the end of this presentation, we're fortunate Dr. Lick, our medical director, is gonna talk to you a little bit about a new device because in order to increase the save rate for cardiac arrest involves a lot of things. And one of them is, of course, using the latest technology. And he's gonna tell you a little bit about some real exciting technology that we were one of the first communities in the United States to use. And I'll let him tell you all about that. But so what we're gonna do now is Fire Inspector Nick House is gonna come up here and say a few words. And all the rescuers are gonna come up and get their pins. Then a family member's gonna speak. And after that, Dr. Lick's gonna say a few words. So with that, Nick House.
Perfect. Welcome, Nick.
Good evening. So I was one of the fortunate rescuers to be on this call. On the night of December 23rd, we were working at Station One and we got called to a possible seizure for a 32-year-old male. As we know, seizures can be seizures or, as Brian Platts has said before, seizures can end up in cardiac arrest. It happened that as we were getting to the scene, we got notified that it was a confirmed cardiac arrest. Coon Rapids PD had already gotten on scene probably about 30 seconds before us. We went upstairs, found Michael laying in the living room, started CPR, did all our normal routines. And in the process, we gave him one shock, continued CPR, and we ended up getting a pulse back. So firefighter Nelson and myself rode with him in the back of the truck to assist Alina. We got him to the hospital where he had excellent care at Mercy Hospital. And with that said, he ended up, I'm talking with Michael today, he's got a new life. He's got implanted defibrillator pacemaker in him. And we had a good outcome. So fortunate event here. And like I said, we're happy to be part of this. So Michael wanted his father, William, here to say a few words. So we'll get William up here to speak.
Well, first of all, it's sort of like a super miracle for us. I just wanted to tell everyone that was involved, and that's you guys two indirectly, one way or another, but the people that worked on Michael. With the good Lord's help and that, you kept him alive for us. As he was recovering, I just wanted to share this with you. He kept on saying, "Boy, is my chest sore." My chest is really sore. He didn't know what happened. And after about telling him about 10 or 20 times, I think it maybe kind of sunk in a little bit. But from seeing him where he was, when we first saw him that night at the hospital, from where he was now, the nurse that was there at first said, "He's lucky he had a bunch of people working on him to keep the blood in the air going." And I just want to thank you so much, everybody, for what you do. And if there's any doubt that you guys haven't done the right thing or right profession or whatever, there's a lot of people that are really happy and thankful and grateful for not only the EMTs, the Fire Department, the Police Department, and all the caregivers. Thank you so much.
This is Dr. Lick, our medical director, to say a few words.
Hi, thanks for having us here tonight. I never get tired of coming to these ceremonies because it's really fun. We've been working really hard at cardiac arrest for the last 19 years I've been medical director at Alina EMS. And we've really promoted the bundle of care. So Officer Platts, what he's doing out in the community, promoting citizen CPR, getting automated external defibrillators, making sure that our first responders have the latest technology, that our ambulance providers and EMS providers are doing the new stuff. But then we gotta take them to hospitals that are expert in their care too, and some are better than others. We have all of that in Coon Rapids and in fact, in all of our service area. So we've been very proactive with a lot of new technology. We're early adopters of the Rescue Pod, the Lucas Mechanical CPR device. And now Coon Rapids is the second place in the world to have this Ellegard device. It's an interesting story, Dr. Keith Lurie, who invented the Rescue Pod, a number of years ago was over in Seoul, Korea. And he is a local physician here. But he was visiting his daughter there. And Dr. Shin, who runs all of EMS in South Korea, asked him to give grand rounds at Seoul University, which he did. And afterwards, Dr. Shin said, "I've got a new problem." He said, "In Seoul, there's 10 million people and they all live in these 40 and 50-story buildings. And our ambulance stretcher won't fit in the elevator." So they actually designed a contraption that folds the patient in half and their legs are up in the air and their head's down. And Dr. Shin said to Dr. Lurie, "What do you think about this?" Because the head was down in this position. Dr. Lurie said, "I think head down's gonna be bad, but I don't know. Let's test." So he's got an animal research lab down on Hennepin County Medical Center. And they tested all different levels. Head down is really bad. Head up is better. There's a lot of science behind this thing. But he has actually developed a new device that gets the patient head and chest up into a better position. And the physiology out of this is phenomenal. They're getting near-normal pressures, blood pressures to brain and hearts in animals that are in cardiac arrest. This is an FDA-approved device. The second use of this device in this country was two days ago on Sunday. Today, the gentleman is alive and recovering. We're saying our prayers that he's gonna continue to recover. But it will be very exciting if and when we do. So we're proud to bring this technology here. We're trying to roll it out throughout our whole area and all too. So it's very exciting. I think we're gonna have to do even more of these celebrations in the future with this device. So thanks to the Fire Department. Everybody does a great job. The whole team works well together. And that's why we're having a lot of the success that we are. So thanks for having us.
Dr. Lick, we do not tire of having you in here either. So these are wonderful. Yep. To Officer Platts, it's one of my favorite things. Don't wait for the help. Be the help.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's huge.
That guy's something else.
Yeah, whatever.
No, he really is. He's doing a terrific job, so.
Right, Don. We gotta kind of keep maintaining that.
Yep. Thanks.
All right. What are we at, Nick? Is that everything?
We are going to present pins now.
Pins, pictures.
Kevin Miller with Alina.
Nice.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, it's a pleasure to be up here. You know, if I'm here, it takes a village. And when you think about the activity that it takes to coordinate something like this, there is so much training and just professionalism that goes on. It's my honor to announce each one of these individuals. I'd like to call up, first is Alina Dispatcher Kurt Weber.
Nick, do you want them to line up so they can get a picture? Or is that the plan?
Sure.
Okay. I'm sorry, I stepped on your name.
EMT Jennifer Olson. Officer Timothy Mor- Moore.
That's all right. Been called worse.
Officer Steve Minion. I knew that. Firefighter Pat Mertz.
Mets.
Mets. Thank you. Captain Justin McGee. And then firefighter Martin Nelson. And I understand Chief Kevin is not available tonight, so.
Wait a minute.
I'm so sorry. Dispatcher Debbie Sissi.
I think we linked the...
I'm gonna get yourself for a picture there.
It's so weird you don't hear camera lenses clicking anymore. I think they're taking pictures.
Like cheese.
There you go. Not everybody left. We must still have some stuff going on, so. All right, we are at the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer.
I move to approve the meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Kicker, to approve the minutes of the March 19th, 2019 meeting. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Understood.
That motion carries. One extension, Councilmember Wells. All right, we are onto our consent agenda. We have three items on our consent agenda. The first is to announce the Coon Rapids summer concert schedule. And I just encourage everybody to get these in your calendar. The first one is, these are down at the Performance Pavilion at the Coon Rapids Dam on Thursday nights. The concerts are offered at no charge to the community. And Anoka County has once again agreed to waive the parking fee during these evenings. The Arts Commission would like to recognize the assistance of the Anoka County Parks and Recreation Department Rangers and other staff in presenting this series. A local Boy Scout troop will sell popcorn, candy, soda, and water during the concerts. And the North Star Lions Club will be selling food items such as hamburgers, hot dogs, and brats. And the Arts Commission appreciates the opportunity to continue presenting this series to the community. This year, we have June 6th, we have The Mooners Rock. June 13th, the Dirty Shorts Brass Band, New Orleans Jazz. You gotta really be careful reading these. June 20th, the Everett Smithson Band, which is music of the Mississippi. June 27th is the Red Letter Band, which is country. July 7th, Minnesota Blue, which is bluegrass and folk. July 18th is Backyard Bands, which is variety. July 25th, Kenny and Rick Variety. August 1st, Vinnie Rose, another variety group. And then August 8th, The Revolution Five, which is a Beatles tribute. So all fun things. And I encourage everybody to get out and partake and enjoy those. In addition to being available at the City Hall, the 2019 schedule has been distributed via the utility bill mailings and will be in the city newsletter and on the website. Item three, the next item on our consent agenda, is strictly an informational item. They're adding an owner at Pappy's Cafe Two Incorporated Doing Businesses, Pappy's Cafe. And the notification from Pappy's Cafe indicated that Mr. Drew Rasmussen has been added as an additional partner in ownership. And because the ownership interest is greater than 5%, the background investigation has been completed. And the Police Department has given approval. Nothing further is required at this time. Again, strictly informational. Item four, which is the last item on our consent agenda, is to approve final payment to Minnesota Mechanical Solutions Incorporated for Project 18-9B, 2018 Well Rehab Contract B, East WTP Booster Pump. So we're looking at approving a change order and final payment to Minnesota Mechanical Solutions Incorporated in the amount of $9,300 for Project 18-9, 2018 Well Rehabilitation. And that's our full consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I'll move to the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Wells. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the consent agenda is adopted. Now we're moving right along up to item five, Planning Case 19-2, Consider a Preliminary Platt, Port Riverwalk, Central Homes. And I'll bet Mr. Harlecker has a dog and pony show for us tonight.
Have a few.
Yep, yeah. It's kind of the Mr. Harlecker Show tonight.
Mayor and council members, the first item on the planning portion of the agenda tonight is the preliminary plat for Port Riverwalk. The area is located on the south side of Coon Rapids Boulevard. Extends from Egrit Boulevard down to East River Road. And it's the south side of the Boulevard. It's outlined here in black. It's about 43 acres. The preliminary plat includes plating 136 single-family lots and then street right-of-way for certain streets. The slides are broken up because of the length of the project. They're really broken up into three sections, as is the site plan presentation. East, center, or west, central, and then east. On the east end here by Egrit, which is right here, this is a new street that's being proposed, Riverwalk Drive. It'll run parallel to Coon Rapids Boulevard down to the end of the project site by East River Road. The lots between Riverwalk Drive and Coon Rapids Boulevard are smaller lots that'll provide lots for a particular housing site, court homes. We'll get into a little more detail as part of the site plan review. The streets accessing these homes are private streets. That's why they're listed as outlots. And then the lots on the south side here are single-family lots with a large wetland complex in this area here. A portion of Drake Street will be platted and will tie into the existing street right-of-way at this point. This is the central portion of the site. Again, a continuation of the court homes going down to the Avacet at the street light here. These areas in here are stormwater management basins. Again, as you get down here, these are larger single-family lots with Bluebird and Avacet being platted here and tying in again into the existing street network. And then on the east end, we have Riverwalk Drive terminating in the cul-de-sac at this point, with Zilla Street extending down here and connecting in with single-family lots on both sides of Riverwalk Drive. Park dedication for the preliminary plat will be park dedication fee in the amount of $2,000 per lot. With that, staff is recommending approval of the preliminary plat with the following conditions. Compliance with Title 11, park dedication in the amount of $272,000 to be paid for the 136 lots. Park dedication will have to be paid prior to releasing the final plat for recording. All engineering comments be addressed and all comments from the Anoka County Highway Department be addressed.
Councilmember Johnson.
Is there consideration in the plat for the pedestrian bridge that we were, have been talking about for some time as related to this property?
That is not included as part of the plat since that is outside, I believe, of the plat boundaries. It'll come in through the Anoka County right-of-way.
Councilmember Johnson, the head bridge, pedestrian bridge will be able to be constructed in the right-of-way.
There's ample space in the right-of-way?
Yes.
Okay. And to connect up with the trails that are existing. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. All right. Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Harlecker?
That was mine.
Mr. Harlecker, that, so the future plans for those outlots that are buildable, like I assume Outlot A would be a buildable thing. And down on the end, that Outlot J and K, is there, are there future plans we have for those? Or do we know?
As you can see, Mayor and council members, this area here is, it's undevelopable. There's a stormwater pond in this area here.
Oh, that's all that low area?
Yes, correct.
Okay, all right, got it.
Outlot L at this location here was originally shown as a housing lot, but because of its configuration, they decided to leave it as an outlot. And that'll be more of a landscape buffer for the back of the apartment complex for the residences there on Bluebird Street.
Okay.
And I believe Outlot A is also undevelopable. It's kind of a low area out that way on the other side of Egrit, west of Egrit.
All right. Consider preliminary plat. All right, so this isn't an introduction. We need to take an action with this.
Here are.
Wow. Councilmember Johnson?
In Planning Case 19-2, I'm gonna move approval of the proposed preliminary plat with the conditions that are stated, 1 through 4. Compliance with Title 11, park dedication in the amount of $272,000 to be paid for the 136 lots prior to releasing the plat for recording. Engineering comments to be addressed and all comments from the Anoka County Highway Department to be addressed as well.
Second. Motion by Johnson, second by Kicker. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I know that we've looked at this a little bit, that this has been something that staff has worked a lot on. I will support it. But there are things about it that I'm disappointed in that we didn't get with part of it. The lots at 40 feet of width are, in my opinion, too narrow. An 80-foot lot is a normal city. And we have narrow lots which have gone down to 50. And I just don't see a lot of green space. I don't see play spaces, you know. So it's gonna be great for the city. And it's gonna be a lot of good things. There's just some things that I wish we would've worked a little hard around.
Any other comments? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. And we are onto item seven, Planning Case 19, wait a minute. Item six, Planning Case 19-3, Consider Preliminary and Final Site Plan for 136 single-family homes, Port Riverwalk Central Homes.
All right, Mayor and council members, this is the consideration for the preliminary and final site plan for the project. As part of the site plan review, the applicant is also requesting use and design flexibility as part of the approval. Again, this is the area with the court homes here and extending down to Avacet. These lots here will be rear-loaded garages with the front of the houses facing Riverwalk Drive, Coon Rapids Boulevard, and the stormwater basins. The streets 24 feet wide, so they allow for two-way traffic, but no parking on the streets. There are designated off-site parking areas in each of these neighborhoods, as well as forest spaces can be accommodated on each lot, two in the garage and two in the driveway. That's kind of the layout throughout the whole court home area here. On the south side of Riverwalk Drive, you've got single-family lots. These streets or these lots have direct access out onto Riverwalk Drive. It's the only area in the plat that has that. The reasoning for that was because of the wetland behind it. There isn't a possibility of extending a road in through here. Even with this design, there are some areas to the rear of these lots where they need to do some wetland mitigation. In the middle section here, you've got single-family lots in this area here with plating of Avacet, Bluebird Street, and Zilla Street. As you can see, all these lots access what I would call the side streets and not Riverwalk Drive. And you get down on the east end, the Riverwalk Drive cul-de-sac. Since this is a less traveled roadway, these lots do have direct access out onto the cul-de-sac. These two are all single-family lots, on lots that are a little bit larger. Go back to this slide here. This illustrates the different housing types and where they're located within the project. The blue areas here are the court homes. where they're located within the project. The blue areas here are the court homes, the green here and down on the east end are single-family, single-level, and the red lots in here are their two-story units. I'll discuss a little bit about the sidewalks. There are sidewalks along all of the, all of the public streets. Riverwalk Drive has sidewalks on the north side in this area here. There isn't a sidewalk on the south side because there was a concern for conflicts with all the driveways, so we kept the sidewalk to just the north side. Drake Street here has a sidewalk proposed on the west side. One of the conditions that the planning commission included was a sidewalk on the east side that can tie into the existing sidewalk just south of this driveway. In the center section, again, sidewalk on the north side, all the way down to Avacet. Once you get to Bluebird Street, there is a sidewalk on the south side also. If you'll see here, there's a sidewalk just on the east side of Bluebird. There isn't one on this side because there's nothing one to tie into on the existing street. One of the conditions of the planning commission's recommendation was to extend the sidewalk along the west side of Avacet to tie into the sidewalk in Bluebird Street. And you get down on the east end, and you've got sidewalks on both sides of Zilla out to Coon Rapids Boulevard, as well as both sides of the cul-de-sac, and it will tie in to the trail system to the east. If you go back to here, these connection here, as well as this connection here, tie in the sidewalk system of this development in with a new trail that would be constructed along Coon Rapids Boulevard. When we looked at the setbacks for the project, since this project wasn't really, single-family developments weren't really contemplated when they set up the ports, that's one of the areas that the applicant is requesting use flexibility for. We looked through the city code to try to find out, well, what could we use for a base for setback requirements? We decided to use the requirements for, called varied density residential developments, which are allowed in the River Rapids overly district, but are not allowed in the port systems, in the port areas. So, we thought, well, that would be a good reference point for setbacks. And what those setbacks are, are 20 feet between principal structures, 22 feet from street right-of-ways, and 40 feet from Coon Rapids Boulevards. One of the areas that the applicant is requesting design flexibility for is setback requirements. They're proposing 20 feet from certain local streets. And that typically occurs at corner lots, where you've got, the front of the house faces the side street, but they've got frontage on Riverwalk Drive. Typically, on our LDR2 zoning district lots, that's considered a side yard setback, and it's got a setback of 20 feet. Where they are proposed, that's what they are proposing here. On the varied density residential, doesn't take side lots, street side lots into consideration, so it's a straight 22 feet. They're also requesting 10 feet between homes. The varied density residential requires 20 feet between homes. Look at the grading plan. The majority of the homes on this project are slab-on-grade. All the court homes are slab-on-grade. The larger, single-family homes, two-story and one-story, are a mix. With these along here are walkout, got slab-on-grade in this area here. And then through the middle, these are a continuation, again, of the court homes with two stories here that are slab-on-grade, and here. And when you get back down to the east end, again with the changing contours, you've got a mix of walkouts and slab-on-grades. The Mississippi River Critical Corridor area extends across the site approximately this location here. Any grading and tree removal on these two lots here will have to comply with the current Mississippi River Critical Corridor ordinance.
Mr. Harlecker, is there a question?
Yes.
Yeah, so, I didn't want to, maybe this is a good time.
Yeah, it is.
Take a little break there.
Okay. So, some of the things you mentioned would be unique for Coon Rapids, and we'd be giving site flexibility that is different than we'd give if someone just built a house in the middle of a neighborhood. And I don't think that's necessarily wrong, because when you build a whole neighborhood, you can give it some unique characteristics that a whole neighborhood can have. But I did just want to double-check some of those things, like 10 feet between houses and 40-foot-wide lots. Do you have examples in other cities where they have similar things? Because, unique to Coon Rapids is different than unique to, say, the metro area. And I'm just curious if those are things that are allowed in other cities, and how that's gone?
No, we did not research other cities. Councilmember Demmer. We did have some of the lots, the closest thing we have in Coon Rapids are the homes up on University and Main Street, Crescent Ponds, and those are 50, some of those are 50-foot-wide lots with reduced setbacks. We did modify the setback requirements up there to allow residential, residence space above the garages, so that would be at a five-foot setback. The other project that has lots similar to this would be Villas on Boulevard. Those are smaller lots, also similar to what we have with the court homes.
Say, you know, Minneapolis. I mean, does anyone know of neighborhoods?
Mr. Mayor, well, I guess because as a former Minneapolis resident, 40 and 50-foot lots are typical in a lot of existing neighborhoods, so.
And the 10-foot spacing between houses?
Pretty common. And at the appropriate time, I think Dave Patberg from Centra can certainly address the council on where they're developing elsewhere in the metro with similar type lots.
When we get there, I think that would be good to talk through.
So, Mr. Harlecker, now, how much of this is going to be an association?
I'll let Mr. Patberg elaborate on that, but a homeowner's association will take care of all the maintenance for the court, component of the project, as well as the yard maintenance for the areas outside of the court neighborhoods. The city will be responsible for maintenance on the city streets. Getting back to the setback discussion for just a moment, there are instances in the city where if you've got two garages next to each other, it is a 10-foot setback between garages.
Well, I mean, I was even thinking of like those Weston Woods up there on Main Street and Hanson, built in the early 90s or the mid-'90s. I mean, those are a little 10th acre lots, those are individual townhomes, detached townhomes. With an association, that's really what we're doing here. It's really no different from that.
Correct. I did have one other question.
Go ahead, Councilmember Demmer.
So, the other one I was wondering, and this is maybe for some combination of people, is if we've, if we've talked to the builders about their current plan for how they're going to build out the site. So, you know, you've kind of got four pretty distinct blocks here, right? The, you've got it divided into three ways, but you have the court homes and the two stories. So, there's really four, four pretty distinct areas. And if they're going to build out a whole area, or if they're going to build out one house here, and one house here, and one house here, and one house here, and then how that affects how we choose to do the utilities. So, if we build all the sidewalks, and then all the sidewalks get run over by building machines, is that, just wondering how the logistics between those two go. The other reason I bring that up, and this maybe is just seeding a question later, is that if they are doing it block at a time, and it takes multiple years, and they come back finding out that certain things have changed in the appetite of customers or whatever, I just want to gauge how final this plat really is versus, by the time it all gets built out, what do you think the odds are that something's going to be totally different in a corner than it's currently laid out?
No. Councilmember, I would have to defer to the builders.
Okay, so when it gets there, I'll give them time to think about it, I guess.
Yep.
But the question about the order and the timing, and how it applies to the city's investment, is everyone comfortable there?
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Demmer, the idea would be to generally, in general terms, we'll construct the streets and the utilities all at once. Sidewalks and ancillary items like that will come in a little bit later as some of the houses get built out. But we're working with Centra Homes to decide, determine how everything gets phased so that the streets are open to traffic to the extent that we can, we need to convey traffic through the neighborhood and as well as the utilities.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Johnson?
So, the question I have is in relation to the neighborhood that many of us have talked about through multiple workshops, and that is that neighborhood between, say, roughly Arby's and Alloy Brewing, that's on 110th Lane and Service Drive. Do you know what the setback between homes is in that neighborhood? Is it 10 feet, or is it less? And the reason I raise the question while you're thinking about it is because I think I've been about as clear as anybody could be during all of our workshops, that while I am enormously supportive of this project, I don't want it to look like that neighborhood. And so, the screening that we're doing on Coon Rapids Boulevard is important. I don't want to have properties where people can look right in through somebody's sliding-glass door from Coon Rapids Boulevard. Frankly, I think it's a public safety issue, among other things. And I know Centra's been attentive to that and responsive to some of that, but when I'm trying to envision this neighborhood, which I think has some wonderful house designs related to it, how close are these buildings going to be? Because I candidly was surprised to see a request to go to a 10-foot setback between buildings, which is about the distance between me and Mr. Demmer for a two-story court building.
Councilmember Johnson, I believe it varies between 10 and 15 feet. Because of the way some of the houses are angled, they might be-
In this development?
No, in the Villas.
Okay. So, this will be actually as narrower, narrower than that? Because, I got to be honest with you, I got a real problem if that's the case.
Possibly.
Okay.
Mayor? Councilmember Ruskoviac?
To that point, do we have an elevation of a block of houses from a street view?
From the Coon Rapids Boulevard.
From Coon Rapids Boulevard. I didn't see that in the packet. Is there one?
I didn't either. I assumed that the elevation is drawing with the three different houses was pretty close to the right spacing, just based on, if you look at that-
I don't think it's close.
The attachment, because it's one tree between the houses on the, on that diagram. You think it's even closer?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I was imagining that is 10 feet.
No.
10 feet would be like, maybe, close to a little bit more than two of those windows. Now, it would be a great time.
David Patberg with Centra Homes. I'll try to answer this question. I've made notes of others, and we can tackle them as you want, as you would like to. What we're looking at is the court homes. These are the homes in between the proposed Riverwalk Drive and Coon Rapids Boulevard. These homes are all rear-loaded, meaning the garage is in the rear, that's why you do not see the garage door. This is the elevation that you would see from Coon Rapids Boulevard with a porch and a front door. We think that's one of the reasons that's going to cause the biggest difference in view of what's going to look like compared to Villages on Coon Rapids. These homes are 30 feet wide, 3-0 feet wide. I do not know, frankly, if this is showing the distance between the buildings to scale. But I know the homes are 30 feet, and so if you took a third of that home, that's going to give you 10 feet. But I do not represent that this is drawn to scale, especially the space in between. The way this neighborhood lays out is that 10-foot between buildings is going to be very standard. And what I mean by that is that Villages on the Boulevard, there's, there's curves in their road, and so they do see some of this bending back and forth. Ours are very much going to be 10 feet right between the buildings. A couple things we've done to try to invest in the view of what's, what it's going to look like on Coon Rapids, from Coon Rapids Boulevard, is the front door facing with the front door, front porch. We're also doing a full LP hardy siding on all the buildings in Riverwalk. That dresses up the look of the neighborhood throughout. It's a little bit difficult to get into the specifics of the grading plan, but much of Coon Rapids Boulevard, we're doing a, it's called an infiltration basin, but we're spending significant amount of energy on the landscaping that's in those little linear stormwater features between these homes and Coon Rapids Boulevard. So, there's a lot of effort, attention, and energy to, to make these look very different than what we've seen down the way. So, I don't know if that's specifically answering all your questions about this.
I don't mean to interrupt you, and I appreciate part of the explanation. I am a little curious now that you help us understand a little better that the front door is going to be facing Coon Rapids Boulevard. How are you envisioning people getting to that front door, given that if visitors come over, there's parking on the side, I see that, they can't park in the main street, but visitors can park on those side stalls, or maybe in, in other parking areas? Will there be a walkway that will go across then, like, inside of the trail?
Yes. So, if you think about, if you're standing on the road of Coon Rapids Boulevard, say you're standing on the curb looking at these houses, there's going to, I don't remember the distances, but there's going to be that, I think it's like 15 feet, maybe 10 to 15 feet from curb to county trail.
Yep.
The county trail is eight to 10 feet wide, and additional Boulevard. And then most of this, then you'll have this stormwater feature I'm talking about. There'll be a retaining wall on the other side of that stormwater feature. Then on top of that, you know, just off of that wall there, then will be a private sidewalk that will serve the whole front of that, those homes along Coon Rapids Boulevard. So, there's, there's a, one, there's some space, but there's a fair amount of things happening in that space.
I'm assuming because of the, you'll have to, I suppose, evaluate what the street lighting is going to be as to whether that's a lighted sidewalk or not, but-
Right, right. I'm very hesitant to share this in a public meeting, but what we're exploring, we have a neighborhood in the city of Ramsey that is, the lots are 30 feet wide, the lots. The house is 20, so it's just the width of the garage, an alley-loaded house with just the garage. And on those houses, we're doing a photos, photometric lights, so the exterior lights of the house are on when it gets dark out. The homeowner could turn them off by flipping the breaker, but there's not a switch inside. We're considering the exact same thing here because of that, that feature and how that will look. And so thus, streetlights will still be there, but in this area with the front porch lights on makes a big difference. And if we do them on those photometrics, then the homeowner's not going to turn them off. They just need to make sure to replace the light bulbs when they burn out.
And you're contemplating things like trees and other screening?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And that doesn't become part of the association outside maintenance, those bulbs?
We've, we've not done that, homeowner, homeowner maintenance.
On the record.
Very good. Yeah, so, I, I actually, I'm, I'm okay with the, with the 10-foot spacing, because the alternative would be- Yeah.
Your Honor. Because I've been raising the most questions on this, I'd just like to share a little bit of my thought process on it. I appreciate the explanation because I think that does address many of my concerns. I also appreciate that you're orienting the kind of the most attractive part of the home out toward Coon Rapids Boulevard and they are attractive homes. So I'm pleased by that and that there's a plan for, for kind of multi-layers of buffering there, which I think does distinguish it from other neighborhoods. And so I'm comfortable moving forward. I got to be honest, I wish it was more than 10 feet in between the buildings, especially since they are two-story buildings, but hopefully as the trees grow up and as we get good buffering and maybe as we get a pedestrian bridge there, that we will have an extremely attractive neighborhood.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yeah, for me, I mean, it's comments that I brought up in the last couple of weeks with staff of, you know, I know that there is an awful lot of iterations with this and we saw it just quite a while ago and I guess I thought it was pretty clear that, okay, yep, it was going to be narrow lots. But narrow lots in this city are 50 feet, they're not 40 feet. You know, and I don't remember anybody ever going, hey, yeah, let's do them all 40. If we did, I totally missed that, I wouldn't have been supportive of it at that time. 10 feet between houses is incredibly tight. It's very urban in feel, but the style of the houses and what we're doing here is not an urban development and so to me that's incongruous. I'm disappointed that there isn't the green space because there's going to be a lot of young families in these places. Where do, if we don't have the pedestrian bridge over to the park, where do they play? Where do they go? And in all of the earlier conversations that I remember talking about this, it was about that sense of community and having those kinds of things integrated into this development. And those kinds of things that made this extra special are gone and that, I'm sad about that. On the flip side, these are beautiful homes. It's going to be a fabulous development, but I think that there was a lot of things that in that iteration process, whether that was with staff or what happened, wherever that, that we lost our way a little bit on this and that's, makes me sad.
We can make it up with pedestrians.
We're going to need to, to be able to get them over to someplace to play. Mr. Stemwell has a question.
Oh, Mr. Stemwell, sorry.
Here comes, I guess, just to reflect back a little bit with regard to both the lot size and the setback. These sizes and setbacks were anticipated when, in previous iterations of this that were brought forward, but more recently in May of 2018, we did discuss a plan that was very similar to this. There might be some minor modifications to that, which we did discuss, or at least were included in the materials, both the lot width and the setbacks that were anticipated at that time because we knew that it was, it's a little bit different product and is widely seen in Coon Rapids. There are some little niches here and there that would be included with that. And certainly as we've gone through the public community meeting process, wanted to portray what the product was going to be. And I don't know if planning staff has any recollection of what some of the community comments were about that, but I guess I just wanted to iterate that, you know, the widths themselves, the layout of the project, what's been included, I think has been established for quite some time.
Councilmember Demmer.
So since you're up there anyway, so I know I asked this a different time and I'm really sorry for forgetting the answer, but if you could just tell us what your current best guess is for development process? Because I really don't have a problem with the narrow spacing if a lot of houses are that way, but if you build houses, you know, spaced apart and then people move in and then you build a house right next to it, they're going to be shocked. So I assume you're building in blocks and if you have, if you end up with a problem as a developer and people don't buy it because they're too close together or people complain about it, then you'll come back and ask for something different on the other lots. That would be my guess. So I just wanted to know how your thought process is on, from here to five years from now, what's likely?
There was a question earlier on about, I'll answer your question about where else these types of houses are being built, these narrow lots. Frankly, they're, they've been a lot of different places. We built on very similar lot widths in the city of Blaine, in the Lakes neighborhood in Blaine, and did a neighborhood in the city of New Hope. Very, very similar product. We're currently building one in the city of Maple Grove. We're just about to put pipe in the ground on one in the city of Ramsey. Very common. What it is, is buyers see this as an alternative to an attached row townhome. And so gets, they get comfortable with that when they know they're not getting a standard suburban lot. With that in mind, we build it like a townhome neighborhood. We start at one end and we go this lot, then this lot. And so if buyer, Mr. Smith wants, oh, I really like this lot five, then we're like, well, you need to wait for one, two, three, four to be built and then we'll start yours. And so it's that mentality of, this is a townhome neighborhood and so the buyer understands that and is looking for it. We build it in that row way also. And that, so that's from the staging question. Now, I've been doing this long enough to have been through the last slowdown in the real estate market. We are currently under contract and resurrecting subdivisions and product neighborhoods that were failed, that started and it failed. We're under contract, we've actually, as Centra Homes, that's kind of what we did for a very long time, is specializing in that exact type of thing. What we realize is that the neighbors, especially if there's a homeowners association and the cities have a very, very strong opinion about what gets built in those failed neighborhoods, is what I'll call them. And so we end up designing a lot of product and we talk to the neighbors and then we talk to the city and then we talk to the neighbors and there's this balance of getting something that works. So if we have another slowdown like we had 10 years ago, I agree, you might have to end up and think about what's there, but from us as a builder and what we see going on in the market and what we see people asking for and looking for, this is what they're looking for. They're looking for, it's somewhat of a lifestyle decision, even though it's not, when you say lifestyle, you typically think empty nesters, but even young professionals or young families, they want to go north for the weekend and so they're looking for different than typical suburban, so.
And I, please don't interpret any of those questions as at all negative. I think it's good to frame that out because I see the fact that this is different than most of the housing stock in Coon Rapids as important to it because quite frankly, we have an awful lot of a certain type of house. And so while I do not want planning to like take one house in that neighborhood and allow them to, you know, subdivide into 40-foot lots, a whole neighborhood with this personality, you know, it shows some robustness for the city's housing stock and I like the fact that it's a continuity between the row houses and the single families on the third acre lot. The biggest reason I was asking about the staging was because, you know, there's a double-edged sword there. One, it allows you the flexibility to make some minor tweaks and changes if something isn't going the way you expected. The flip side of that is we've had some PUDs that have quickly become sort of unplanned UDs as they've gone along because nothing was working. And so, you know, if you're going to build it all in three years versus if you're going to build it all in 10 years, I can take my guess that this is really final. If the plan's short-term, it's probably pretty final. The only other staging question I had is your statement about it's a townhome, so we do one, two, three and then four. I'm assuming what you mean is in the green area, we do one, two, three and four and simultaneously in the red area, we do one, two, three and four and in the blue area, we do one, two, three and four, but you're not going to do the green area over here and the blue area over here. You're going to do them all in that southeast corner first.
So from, as we're talking to the city and like you said, this is one neighborhood, but as a builder, when we come in, it's three different products?
Yes.
And each of those products has multiple floor plans and multiple elevations and we will sell it as three different neighborhoods. So we'll have three models with, you know, one or two specs per type of product. And so it'll, the idea is we would, in a sense, build it all at once. And so we see it as three neighborhoods of, you know, this many lots in this neighborhood, this many lots in this neighborhood. And so we'll be very active in the building.
So by that logic, the one most likely to change, even though it sounds like you're saying change was more of a reaction to something bad happening than part of the plan, would probably be the ones up in this corner because they'd be the last one built? Or the ones down in that corner because they'd be the last one built?
For me, for me, it comes down to the total number of units. And so the court homes, we have more of those and thus since we have more of them, it'll take longer to build through those.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
So as far as the building now is concerned, what side would you start on?
Where our focus and effort and energy is that Zilla and Riverwalk Drive, that attention to detail is right where we're looking to start everything and build models in that area.
Okay, and it would spread from there.
Councilmember Johnson.
Something you just said actually triggered a question in my mind, which is when we get into like, for example, the court home area or even the single-family home area where things are built more along a street and a row, is it the customer that decides which one of the, say, six court home designs goes there or are you dictating that a little bit so that there's some variety? Because one of the things that I'm a little kind of curious and concerned about is whether or not we're going to have like four that are identical because it becomes a really popular floor plan and design and then one that's different.
What, there's a couple, a couple answers that we, we offer enough variety of floor plans to help give those options, but the bigger one is the change in elevation. And so you might have one floor plan that will have three elevations, but even those elevations will have multiple color options of those. And so we'll get to the point from a homeowner, we'll say you can't have the same color next to or across the street from.
So you reserve some control as a developer about that?
Absolutely. We're, this entire neighborhood will have an association, homeowners association, will have two associations, one that has the private streets and one that's on the public streets. And we start out as those associations, as the board, we put those guidelines, those architectural guidelines in place as part of the homeowners association documents.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions?
Mayor.
Councilmember Bruscovjak.
I would just like, I mean, this has been in front of us for close to two years and I know this is very well thought out. There's been a lot of collaboration between the builder, the city and specifically with the residents. So I'm happy with the density that we have here, they are close together, but in my opinion, much more desirable than an apartment building. I did have a question on the design flexibility that you're asking for in terms of the street width. Could Mr. Harleker show us on this map which streets are going to be narrower than our standard? And then there's one other question that goes along with that that maybe Centra can ask. You mentioned that there's going to be areas where there's no driveway parking, but there's four designated parking areas provided at the end of each block and I'd like to see those pointed out too.
Okay, at this point, let's talk about the pavement width. That's really a result of tying into the existing streets. Some of these streets, Avicet and Bluebird are not 32 feet wide, the existing street that they're tying into. So in order to be consistent tying into these existing streets, that's why the street width is narrower. Up on the end of the cul-de-sac, because of the reduced amount of traffic that's going up there and to help reduce the amount of grading and just bring the more of a neighborhood feel to it, the street width has been reduced to 29 feet along there also. And the parking areas, there's one here, one here, there's one here, one here and one So there's two, four, five of them in the court home area.
And that's to accommodate because there's going to be no parking on those private streets allowed, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And those are designed primarily as visitor parking, not additional overnight parking for the residents or anything, right?
Correct. Each of the units can accommodate, each of the homes can accommodate four cars, two in the driveway, two in the garage.
Councilmember Johnson.
In Planning Case 19-3, I'm going to move approval of the proposed preliminary and final site plan with the, it looks like 12 stated conditions. They are as follows, compliance with Title 11, engineering comments to be addressed, homeowners association agreement approved by the city attorney, comments from the Inoka County Highway Department to be addressed, to enter into a site security agreement with the city, preliminary and final plat are approved, park dedication in the amount of 272,000 be paid prior to releasing the final plat for recording, sidewalk along the east side of Drake Street and the west side of Avicet Street must be installed, cement board siding will be installed on all four sides of the home, landscaping around the stormwater ponds will include a mix of native planting, shrubs and trees to provide natural appearance, use flexibility for single-family homes and density and design flexibility for setback streets, widths and sidewalks are approved as we've discussed, and additional evergreen trees will be planted along Coon Rapids Boulevard adjacent to Lot 151 and between Zilla and Coon Creek as determined by staff and the applicant and the applicant will intermingle the overstory tree species along the Riverwalk Drive and change ornamental trees along the Avicet Street to overstory trees. I think that's it and I make that motion.
Second. Motion by Johnson, second by Wells. So do you need the other things for use flexibility in there as well then? Yes, Mayor.
I'd like to take that as a separate motion.
Separate? Okay, all right, so we have a motion and a second as Councilmember Johnson stated. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer.
Okay, so you would like these three bullets as a motion?
I would suggest that you would say that the council approves the use and design flexibility, you could even go on the stated findings for both use flexibility and design flexibility.
Was that a motion, Mr. Brody?
I moved that we offered the use flexibility and design flexibility per the three findings that the modification significantly advances the intent of this section, the modification is necessary to develop the property in an efficient, well-organized way and the plan provides significant site amenities buffers and other elements to offset any potential harmful effects that could be caused by use. So those are the findings.
And then down below for design flexibility, there's one additional.
Oh, and the modification is necessary to respond to site conditions, will result in better integration of uses and additional public amenities and will further the intent of this section, the design flexibility section.
I'll second that as stated in the agenda item.
We have a motion by Demmer and a second by Johnson. Mr. Brody, did we get it all in there?
It's a little awkward, I guess.
It is a little awkward.
I don't like you guys.
So I moved to strike the commentary. But I do think we should discuss those things.
They are discussed.
No, I mean we, because to say we have a bunch of findings that we haven't discussed is a little odd, so.
You sure those weren't part of what we discussed already?
Well...
They were adopted, I mean, you're talking to a recommendation from the planning commission.
Yeah, so...
Unless you disagree with them.
There's a motion.
There's a motion.
I made the motion. We were allowed to discuss a motion, but...
My second.
So we have a motion by Demmer and a second by Johnson.
So this is the time to discuss?
Sir, any discussion?
So, so Mr. Mayor, you know...
Councilmember Geiser?
You know, and so I've stated it a couple of different times. You know, I agree with the majority of them. I think the finding that the plan has significant site amenities just doesn't pass muster. It's not, they don't have any amenities. So I would look to strike that bullet as a finding.
So, your honor, I, I think that the sidewalking and the parking spaces for overflow are amenities?
Parking for, is part of a standard parking. It's not an amenity. An amenity is something that provides, enhances the beauty and the functionality of the site. You know, site amenities tend to be plate areas. They tend to be community gathering areas that they drive forward the intent. I don't see that with this, and so thus, I would look to strike that bullet as a reason. I think the other ones hold muster. That one, in my mind, doesn't.
So you're saying, sorry, so just making sure, because that sounds like an amendment.
Yeah, I would request an amendment to the motion to use all bullets except for the one that says that the plan provides significant site amenities, buffers, and other elements.
Is there a second on the amendment?
Can I understand what that would mean first?
What does that, yeah, what does that mean?
So is that bullet necessary?
Well, you're moving.
I know.
Right, but he wants to clarify, is that necessary?
I just want to understand what the consequences for that bullet being changed are, because they wrote it intentionally.
It's my understanding, and Mr. Harlecker corrected, but I think we need all three of these, not two or three. We're down here, we can't put it all in one, but I think it needs to, and design flexibility hit all three of those.
Okay. Thank you. So we have a motion, we don't have a second on the modification. So we're back to the original motion and second. So, any further discussion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Guskovia?
I, I think that the site plan does offer site amenities. The fact that there's sidewalks all the way through this development is a little bit unique. There's not a sidewalk in my neighborhood. Most areas of the Coon Rapids don't have sidewalks. That was one of my concerns with a narrower street, that it does have these sidewalks. I would just like to add, I think that is an amendment.
Your honor, if I might come.
Councilmember Johnson?
Just following that, so in the 12 stated conditions of my original motion that passed regarding planning case 19-3, there are also additional accommodations for screening and buffers that are described within there that the developer and the city staff have worked out. So I would add that. And then it includes a mix of native planting, shrubs and trees to provide a natural appearance and the like. So I'm willing to go forward with the stated conditions.
Okay. Councilmember Demmer?
One other thing I just wanted to double check. The way that that is worded, "will result in better integration of uses or additional public amenities," I think there's two ways to interpret that statement. One is that this plan has public amenities, the other is that it ties into existing amenities that the city has.
Or will allow it.
Or will allow it. And so, again, this does tie into the trail system. And so I want to make sure that that's an adequate interpretation of that, that it ties into existing public amenities that we've already built.
Might even allow...
Because as private roads, it's hard, you know, some of this is private, so calling it public is a little weird.
Might even allow for a pedestrian bridge.
That's rare.
Councilmember Geiser?
I think my probably 16 years of planning are getting in the way here of some of the different things. When you do use and design flexibility on a site, that means that we are giving up our standards. We are saying, I will give you something to say. You can have much smaller lots, you can have smaller setbacks, you can have smaller roads, you can do all of these things because I get something back. And I don't know what we are getting back. I mean, it's a great development, but typically, when there is a design or use flexibility, granted, there is something in the site plan and the design where the builder goes above and beyond our existing standards. There isn't anything in here that's above and beyond our existing standards. That's why I have trouble with some of these statements. I mean, it's, it's looking at, you know, where are those things that we could have asked for? Where are those things? And I get that we are way too far down the road with this. And where it makes me sad and disappointed that the things that we had talked about over the couple of years, and that when we talked about things, and I get that we saw pictures, they didn't always have, you know, width on them. We weren't seeing the level of detail that we needed to know that things were veering away from the original visions. That said, you know, it's, I mean, I will support the project, but it's, I think we gave up more than we're getting.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just a little bit more on the amenities. I think we are getting things in this development that we don't see in other developments. For example, the stormwater basins that are necessary for a project like this. In this development, they almost look like pieces of landscape architecture, more than just a pond that's gonna get filled with water and become all scummy. And the amount of landscaping that's throughout the development, I think those are all very nice amenities that we're gonna see in the city.
All right. With no further ado, let's vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries. One opposed, Councilmember Geiser. All right. We now have to consider planning case 19-6, item seven, consider introduction of an ordinance to change the zoning from PUD Port River Rapids Overlay to Port River Rapids Overlay, 100th Avenue and Bluebird Street, City of Coon Rapids. Mr. Harlecker, you just wanna hit the highlights while you're standing there?
Yeah. Mayor and council members, what this is, it's an old PUD that was approved back in 1980 to allow the expansion of an existing strip center at this location here. Since that PUD is no longer relevant, we're proposing to do a zone change to remove that PUD from this area here. Here's the zoning. Site's about 50,000 square feet. So staff, as the planning commission recommended, city council introduce the proposed ordinance, removing the PUD.
Councilmember Geiser?
This is housekeeping. It's just to keep everything clean. So, planning case 19-6.
It's just an introduction.
Oh, just an introduction. We will introduce it, but it's just...
Okay. Any other questions from Mr. Harlecker? All right, so then, in planning case 19-6, we will consider the ordinance to change the zoning from PUD Port River Rapids Overlay to Port River Rapids Overlay, 100th Avenue and Blackbird, 100th Avenue and Bluebird Street, City of Coon Rapids. We'll consider that introduced. And...
Your honor?
Mr. Councilmember Wells? This is an item late, but I'd just like to say that I'm excited about the project, the Central Homes project. This was a hot topic to redevelop, this neighborhood, when I lived there, and I have been out of that neighborhood for 21 years. So this project is really welcome to the city, I think. And I know that a lot of my ex-neighbors were signed up to look at these to live in, so I think it's gonna be a great project. Yeah. I mean, and the open houses were well-received. I mean, I think we all had these visions of what we thought could be there, and it just, it just never panned out. And I think we have a beautiful project here. The neighbors are all excited about it, the open houses went well, and we're looking forward to it, and get 'em up, you know? All right. Mr. Harlecker, so now you're gonna, I'll bet you deliver item eight. Are you gonna talk to us about the police sergeant's labor agreement, too?
Sure.
All right. Item eight, planning case 19-1, consider approval of alternative exterior materials for building expansion, Green Bay Packaging, 555 87th Lane. And I know this is just the exterior materials, but I have to say, we're very excited about your expansion. That is an awesome, awesome expansion. Mr. Harlecker?
Do a brief overview here. Green Bay Packaging is located here, outlined in black. We've got 90th and 87th Lane provide access. Back at the March planning commission meeting, March 21st, the planning commission approved the site plan for the expansion, with the condition that the city council consider exterior materials on a certain portion of that expansion. What that involves is the expansion of the warehouse area here, as well as the production area here. Other areas that were approved was an employee area here and a design studio here. The proposed exterior material for the warehouse expansion and the production expansion will match the existing exterior of the building. A sample of material is down front of the podium here. It's a typical concrete precast tip-up panel.
Maybe you could just hold it out an arm's length for a while, so we can look at it?
I tried that at the planning commission meeting, and I'm still sorry. And what it is, it will match the existing exterior, but it does not comply with the current exterior material standards. And in the code, there is an option, if it does not meet the standards, they can use it, providing city council approves that standard. So that's why it's before you tonight. The additions across the front do meet the exterior material standards. It's just warehouse and production areas that require your consideration.
Okay, this is reasonable. Councilmember Geiser?
Oh, I was gonna take it. It's just the, you know, it is unreasonable, I think, for us to ask somebody to take their building where they're adding on and make it look different, and it just, that doesn't make any sense. If you're building a new one, we want you to meet the standards. You know, it would be just like saying, you know, here, you're gonna add a garage onto your house, and you can't match your siding, you know? It just would be crazy. So I would move in planning case 19-1, that we approve the use of the gray precast concrete panels with the rake finish to match the existing walls based on the finding that their use is a better integration with the surrounding area, or in this case, the existing building.
Second?
Motion by Geiser, second by Kicker. You need that last, and furthers the intent of this section in there?
I don't think you do, but...
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. You...
Great.
Wonderful.
He doesn't want to leave.
Is that what it is? All right. We are at item nine, consider adoption of resolution 19-40, approving the 2019-2020 police sergeant's labor agreement. And Mr. Stenwell, apparently Mr. Harlecker's not gonna do this, so maybe you wanna run a trial and run us through it?
Mayor and council, I can, I can give you the short version, yes. So this is the fourth of four contracts that were opened for 2019 and beyond. With the police sergeant's contract, much of their language reflects and is based upon the police officer's contract. And so inevitably, this tends to be our most straightforward negotiation in a lot of ways. Certainly, that was the case this year, as we've settled on everything that would affect them that was in the police officer's contract. So you'll see the wage schedule is the same at 2.75%, 3%. Their wages are based on the top patrol rate, the training, and the sick leave adjustments were also included in this proposal as well. And so with that, assuming council does approve this contract, we won't have any labor agreements until 2021 and beyond.
Your honor?
Councilmember Johnson?
I'd move approval and adoption of resolution 19-40, approving the labor agreement between the city and the law enforcement labor services, Local 362, representing the police sergeants, and the memorandum of agreement extending the health care savings plan as well.
Second. Motion by Johnson, second by Wells. Discussion?
Your honor?
Councilmember Johnson?
So item three in the substantive terms of the agreement is training, Article 13. It contains a huge list of training. And it talks about how any non-scheduled training or training that's outside of somebody's regular duty hours would be qualified for overtime pay. I get that, I'm assuming, and I just wanted to just say this, I'm hoping we're encouraging most of that training to happen during regular shift times and office hours, especially things like county attorney updates and things like that, which can happen at any point in time. Mr. Stenwell?
Yeah, mayor and council, certainly with training, we're in control of that. I think the issue here is there are times where we really don't have a choice. There are certain trainings that are just not offered, and sort of the, a burden, I guess, of that, if you're working overnight shift, come in the next day and work under non-scheduled time. And in some cases, it actually works to our advantage with shift minimums and other things to schedule a training that might be off-shift. We did take a close look at worst-case scenario, if everybody was doing training on an overtime schedule, and certainly, we would never anticipate being anywhere near that number, but it was something that even could be absorbed probably in current budget. But right now, yes, there are some trainings that have to be scheduled on that, and sometimes maybe we want that, but a majority of it can be scheduled.
And don't get me wrong, I see great value in regional training that will be off of normal shifts and participating with other agencies and kind of multi-jurisdictional training and things like that. So I would encourage it, just try and budget for it. That's it. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that is adopted. And we are on item 10, consider resolution 19-41, stormwater drainage rate increase. Were you gonna tell us about this, Francie? Or Matt?
I'll take a swing at it, mayor and council. Tim, Mayor Public Works Director, was intending to be here tonight and wasn't unable to, and so I'll just make a few comments. First being that this rate increase was anticipated in our 2018 budget, so we had some discussion on that as we started to develop that budget. It's really driven by a number of needs and priorities in the city. Recently, as you'll recall, we completed our comp local surface water management plan. Had to write that down, make sure I got all the words right. And as a part of that plan, it really anticipates what our future infrastructure needs, plannings, and so forth. A lot of it driven by new regulation, whether that's through the Minnesota Pushing Control Agency and their permitting process, and plans and so forth. And additionally, there are some city projects that we're anticipating, things like localized flooding, improvements of that nature. And so this 10% increase anticipates that plan, and as you're aware, we'll take another look at this as we're starting to develop the 2020 budget and beyond. But this certainly was an area that we've had to do some catch-up on from a budgeting standpoint in order to anticipate those future projects, and that's what's being reflected here tonight.
And this follows a 10% increase in 2018?
Correct. Yes. And maybe just by point of reference, right now, for a single-family home, the current is $11.45 per unit, a quarter, and that increased to $12.60 a unit.
Your honor?
Councilmember Kicker?
I recommend that we adopt resolution 19-41, establishing stormwater rates.
Second.
Motion by Kicker, second by Demmer. Discussion?
Mayor? Councilmember Guskovia?
I know we had that unexpected, that...
I know we had that unexpected, that big 42-inch collector, collector thing that needed to be refurbished, so that took a big chunk out of this fund. So does this 10% increase just keep us operationally positive throughout, throughout 19 then?
Yeah, Mr. Stemwell?
Mayor and council, a lot of what does anticipate future infrastructure project needs is we look at kind of from a 10-year perspective. I believe that for the project you're referring to was a sanitary sewer project, where this is specifically for storm water.
Okay. It was a big enough pipe, it seemed like-
It seemed like a sewer.
But-
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Magazler?
For me, I find it hard that it's 10% two years in a row, and I get that it's maybe a total of $5 across the year, which is, in some respects, a smaller dollar amount, but that still can be big for some families. What I would like to encourage staff with is when we're looking at these kinds of things, that let's look at these more from a workshop perspective and make sure that we understand all of the details, where we're going, what are the plans. Because I don't know if I'm the only one that maybe missed something, that I don't remember significant conversations about, okay, we're going to do 10% this year or 10% next year, so it's 20%. When you see these, the first time we really look at it is when I get this in my packet, I think that that, we deserve a little bit more conversation before having these things just come in front of us, but-
I agree. When we're doing that budget thing, it's striking from a fire hose. So for us to, you know, remember this little thing, I had missed it, and I'm sure it was there, and I'm sure we talked about it, but, and I guess I'm not as concerned about the single-family homes, you know, $5 a year, it's $5 a year. I'm more concerned of the sticker shock of the commercial industrial, the hospital that has however many acres they've got, if they've got 20 acres or 40 acres, and then it's $7 per acre per quarter. It's a significant bump in a bill that they've got their budget worked out for, and I've been, I'm just curious if we're going to hear back from some of those.
Mr. Mayor, I think my point is, I don't want to have this kind of stuff be in my packet for the, in the first time that I'm seeing it. You know, I just want to have more pointed discussions to make sure that we're on board before it just seems to be a little bit more assumed that we're just going to go along.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Mayor? Counselor Druszkowiac? I just, I echo that point, and I think that with the melting that we had with this year, and for the most part, a pretty successful runoff of all that storm water, but I know we had some issues, so where those, where those were issues, I would like to see where they were and where we're going to attack that with this funding. Good point.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. And we are on to the open-mic public comment. If you are here to address council on, for open-mic, provides an opportunity for the public to address the city council on subjects that are not part of the regular meeting agenda. The public is invited to express any concerns they may have, which are relevant to the affairs, policies, or practices of the City of Coon Rapids. Remarks will be limited to three minutes, and if you wish to participate, please approach the podium and state your name and address before addressing the council.
My name is Jeffrey Bowman, I live at 10452 Mississippi Boulevard with my wife Jean. We've lived there for the past 28 years, and there are problems with the property and with the home, and we intend to correct those by building an addition. We have plans drawn up and are requesting bids. The plans include an oversized bay in which we intend to park our somewhat old and unsightly pontoon boat during the winter, which the neighbors will appreciate. I sent the plans to Scott Harlecker for preliminary review. He identified an issue that would, if he is correct, prevent us from completing the addition as designed. He states that city code does not allow an attached garage to be taller than the principal structure, because an attached garage is considered an accessory structure and not principal structure. This interpretation would prevent us from including the oversized bay, and in fact, would even prevent a bay with an eight-foot door. The code itself, in my opinion, is sufficiently clear on this issue. An attached garage is in fact the principal structure, and therefore not subject to accessory structure height limits. This is found in the LDR 1 Code 11-602.212A, which clearly lists attached garage as a component of a principal structure, and not as something that would qualify as an accessory structure. In the same section, under accessory structure, essentially all items listed are specified as detached. Everywhere in the LDR 1 Code, the word accessory is always followed by the word structure, and in no case there is an attached garage referred to as accessory, suggesting that only detached structures can be regulated as accessory structures. In the definition section 11-201, we find the following, garage slash storage structure, comma, private, and accessory structure or accessory portion of the principal structure, which is used by the resident of the property to store motor vehicles, major recreational equipment, or other personal property. In other words, a garage which is an accessory portion is logically the principal structure. Now Scott Harlecker suggested I request a variance, but doing so would imply that he is correct. I believe he is incorrect, and request this council do whatever is necessary, proper, and timely to clarify that an attached garage is not an accessory structure, so that I may proceed with this project. Thank you. I have handouts and a website.
You're putting us in a tough spot, Mr. Bowman. Very succinct and right on the nose.
I spent the entire day for this three minutes.
Thanks, Mr. Bowman.
Do you have the site plan attached, too, or can I?
Yes, on the website that I created for this.
Oh, well, there you go. Okay.
All right.
Well, I think we're going to kick this one over to the city attorney for an interpretation of our code and a response.
So Dr. Bowman, you can expect a response from staff, and if they want any input from council, they will ask. Thank you. Is anybody else here to address council for open-mic this evening? Hearing none, we will close that portion of the, and it was like 2 minutes and 40 seconds, too. Really well done. We have a response from last meeting's open-mic. Mr. Rick Menelik of 9290 Unity Street appeared at the open-mic portion of the March 19th. City council meeting to express concerns of our proposed full-access interchange at Trunk Highway 610 and East River Road. On March 27th, staff mailed a letter and preliminary project layout to the neighborhood west of East River Road and generally north of Trunk Highway 610 to 94th Lane to provide known information to date on the unfunded interchange, and the staff will continue to update council and property owners as potential plans progress. And one thing that's important to recognize is, what we've got is, we don't have the final, we don't have the final picture yet. We have a proposed, we have a proposal, and once we have funding and engineering, there will be open houses, and we've seen projects change dramatically once the neighbors have started to input and with the engineers, so we're a long way from knowing exactly what that's going to look like yet. Mr. Johnson's nodding his head. Okay, excellent. We don't have any other open-mic responses, and we are to other business. Mr. Stemwell?
Mayor and council, I could kick it off, and I'll be taking the place of Mr. Tim Anderson, who was not able to be here tonight, and I don't have any sort of bright quips to share with you. I was going to say-
I thought you were going to say you were going to tee it up.
I wish, well, now I wish I would have thought of that. However, I am happy to share that Bunker Hills will be open for business, the golf course, the restaurant, and other things have been for some time. This Friday, 27, our 27 championship holes will be open out there. I know Tim and his crew are very excited to see golfers out on the golf course. I'm sure there will be some conditions out on the course that aren't ideal with, you know, some snowbanks and things probably tucked away, so get a free drop if you hit to the snowbank, I imagine, but that was the big news of the day coming out of Bunker Hills that I wanted to pass along.
So that's Friday, is that April 5th then, I think?
Yes.
Yes.
That is right.
Excellent. Great news.
Yeah.
So I've just got a, I've got a letter from a constituent, and I just told him I'd bring it up at other business, and he's concerned about the traffic speeds since Foley was redone between Highway 10 and EGRIT over there in four lanes, and he said spring's coming, and the cars just go so fast there, and he's wondering if we can get some of those traffic controllers with the flashing, you're going X-fast and, you know, so.
If I might just dovetail on that, and that's my ward, and I've heard the same concerns from multiple neighbors, probably including the same that you heard from mayor. Where it's particularly important and frankly kind of dangerous, I think, is in that area as you're heading, as people are heading southbound on Foley and they come around the corner before 105th, the people, there's only one exit from that entire neighborhood on 105th that comes out onto Foley, and so people heading to work or leaving the neighborhood to go wherever they're going to go in the morning are confronted with this kind of fast-paced rush hour traffic that whips around that corner, and it's really difficult to gauge whether they're going 40 miles an hour or 55 miles an hour as they come around the corner. And I know there have been some near misses and people getting run up on from behind, and I'm thinking, one, it would be nice to have the temporary traffic control sign out there, but should we be talking to the county about some additional signage? And I'm not sure what that would look like, if it's entering traffic or something along those lines, just to create some additional awareness. I wish people would, because it's a four-lane, and we have two lanes heading southbound, I wish people would kind of realize that there's entering traffic and move over to the left, but they're just, they're open-minded to get to work, and that's what they're doing.
Or they're updating their Facebook or something, you know.
Well, yeah, let's hope not. It's going to be a new statute, I can snap pretty soon, but it's going to take a while for it to have effect, so.
All right. Other business?
Thank you.
Thanks. We have one dessert and concert series coming up, April 11th, 13th, Thursday night, April 13th. Dick Zuplinski is going to be playing the accordion there.
I think he'll write the first on April 11th.
April 11th, is it?
Yeah, hit the fifth, Friday, the fifth, 7th.
I was told there'd be no mess.
Okay, whatever that Thursday is. All right. Other business coming for council this evening?
Move to adjourn.
Second? Motion by Wells, second by Demmer to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.